It's definitely five o'clock, isn't it? Good, hard to do. Nice to see everybody. Looks like all the newbies here are signing our ethics codes. Are we all set with that before we start this meeting? All right, well, so nice to see all of my colleagues here. Last time I saw most of you, we were reading 'Twas the Night Before Christmas and subbing in your amazing son, Commissioner Wilson. That was a fearless young man, I can say that. Yes. So, I will officially call this meeting to the order of the Committee of the Whole for the Kalamazoo City Commission from Monday, December 1st, 2025. Clerk Borning, please call it all.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Peddle.
Present.
Commissioner Sladey.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Clerk Borning. Communications? None, Mayor. All right, thank you so much. Now, we are down to public comments for the Committee of the Whole meeting. Just a reminder that the public comment period at the Committee of the Whole is two minutes. There will also be a public comment period in advance of our business meeting that starts at seven. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to take advantage of the public comment period?
My name is Edward Nickerson. I live at 1004 Douglas Avenue, Apartment 611. What I discussed the last time I was in here, if anybody would like to know more about it, I have the paperwork. I can put it in terms that anybody can understand. My apartment building says that they have no responsibility to clear the sidewalks off by the street. So, I call the Department for the City, and the guy tells me that by the time they send somebody out, it either melted away or there has been new snowfall. And I can't tell the difference between new snow and old snow. I think maybe we should get somebody in there that can do their job properly. I noticed that they took a plow down the bike paths on the street, but right at every corner, between the sidewalk and the road area, there's a pile of snow. That should be cleared out. I've been walking around, jumping over a foot and a half of snow and ice all day long. I've had eye surgery. I'm tired. Maybe you can get them to start clearing that area out between the sidewalks. That's all I have to say right now.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to provide a comment during this public comment period? See no one else, and thank you for everyone who took the opportunity to take advantage of public comment. We're now down to the work of our work session. City Manager Moore.
Good afternoon. It is our pleasure to present a presentation on utility rates. I would like to call up Director Baker.
Hello, Director Baker. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Commissioners. It's our pleasure tonight to talk about our proposed utility rates. Just an overview of the agenda, we're going to talk about the, some of the utilities themselves, water and wastewater, how they're funded, that sort of thing. We're going to talk about projects and programs that these funding sources provide for. We're going to talk about what the rate impacts are, what those proposed rates are. And then we also have a special guest tonight from the Community Action Agency of South Central Michigan. We'll be talking about water affordability and the programs that we have in place for folks that are members of the utility. So, jumping right into the water system, this map in front of you represents our service area, so the blue kind of squiggly map area shows all the areas that we provide water service to. The dark areas are lakes, so I just want to make that note, that kind of lighter blue is our service area. Our water system provides water, retail water service, to an area of about 190,000 people. City Kalamazoo residents are about 40% of that. There is 11 total jurisdictions that we represent in drinking water. Some additional details, something that no, and we'll be talking about it in some of the next slides, are that we have 13 treatment plants in water, so that's something rather unique. We've got many different pressure districts based on how high those districts are, kind of above the baseline of what the lowest elevation is. And then, you know, just some details that makes our water system unique. Our water system is the largest all groundwater system in the state of Michigan. We're the fifth largest overall utility, so there's a pretty unique characteristics of the water system that inform some of the work that we're doing related to that. In wastewater, we also provide service outside the city proper. We provide service now to 22 communities, so 11 additional communities. We provide a service area of about 230,000 customers, and of that area, Kalamazoo city residents represent about 25% of that customer base. This year, we celebrated 70 years of operational excellence at the wastewater treatment plant, the Kalamazoo Water Reclamation Plant. One treatment plant in wastewater as opposed to 13 in drinking water. We treat, on average, about 27 million gallons a day, so that stuff, material comes in day in and day out. We treat that and we discharge it by permit to the Kalamazoo River, and compliance with that permit is nearly perfect, but not perfect. We're about 99.7% in terms of compliance regulatory standards that we meet. So, we're doing pretty good, but not quite 100%. In terms of capital projects, if you look at water, we've got about $770 million a capital program over the next five-year period. Those projects can all kind of be rolled up into a few of these categorical areas, including lead service line replacement, cast iron main replacement, water quality improvements, and then system reliability improvements. We're going to talk about a few of these projects here. Lead service line replacements, starting in 2017, the City Commission prioritized lead service line replacements at an elevated annual rate. We started replacing lead service lines at 500 services or more per year with the goal of completing all of that work by 2037. We're now 61% complete, we've got about 10,000 services to go. We crossed that halfway point last year in September, and we've got another 1,200 lead service line replacements scheduled for Edison in 2026. It's our goal to stand in front of you next year and announce that we're 75% complete. That's what we're working towards. We also want to highlight some of the other important factors of our lead service program here in Kalamazoo. We've got one of the best programs in the state. We offer free lead testing for any household, so we've got regulatory compliance assessment we have to do on 100 house homes twice a year, so we've got a period from January 1st to June 30th, and then we've got July 1st through December 31st. So, during those testing periods, those are six-month periods, we've got to go out and we've got to sample 100 homes, and there's a compliance way we've got to do, we've got to get five liters, it gets stagnant eight hours overnight, and we've got to verify the service line material that those homes are led. We'll, we've got to do that program, but we'll also do any home, anytime, call us, we'll schedule it, we'll come out and we'll test your home to see if you've got any concern with lead. In addition to that, if you test above action level, we'll work with you to identify the source. That source could be a non-NSF certified faucet, so you may be in a new home, you may be in a home built in the year 2000, which was not very long ago, and is very new in terms of homes, but that fixture may have contained lead. Fixtures were not required to be lead-free until after 2014. We just had a home that we worked through this process and troubleshooted the home. We found out that it was a fixture, original of the home, new, from the year 2000, but not compliant with the 2014 lead and copper rules, so it was not lead-free. Also, if your home does have a lead service line and you test above action level, and you're not in our area, you're not in our project area, so that, next year, that's Edison, let's say you've got a home in Vine, and we come and we test your home, and you're over action level, and it's due to a lead service, we will schedule that lead service immediately, and we can guarantee that will be replaced within two weeks. I also want to highlight where we're at right now with our program. Action level's 12, this was lowered, it used to be 15, that's lowered, and our 95th percentile, our 90th percentile result right now is three parts per billion. So, our numbers are continuing to trend down. Three is pretty low, this is a very significant decline, and we hope to continue to see that decline. I'm going to talk about water main replacement. Why are we doing water main replacement? Well, we have, on average, about 100 water main breaks per year here in Kalamazoo. Those water main breaks are isolated to areas of pipe that we know are of a concern. They're material and date of certain age of material pipe, predominantly dating to post-World War II era pipe that has significant corrosion and is also experiencing significant break history. Last year, around February 15th, we had more main breaks than we did days in a year. So, on February 15th, we're about 46 days into the year, we had 53 main breaks at that time period. So, this is something that can be extremely impactful to our residents when we're going through those highly cyclical periods of rate break, or, excuse me, of breaks, and we're working to get after that by coordinating cast iron main replacements with our street schedules. So, we're actually working with a firm from the UK. We've mapped all of our water main breaks, and we've identified all the pipe material, pressures, age, and everything else. So, we've got a probability of failure index for every pipe segment on every street. So, when we identify a street project, we then identify that pipe that's on that street, and we're able to look at what is the probability of pipe failure within the next 10 years. And those streets that have a high probability of failure based on all that information I just stated, we prioritize that and coordinate replacement when we do those street projects. That's why a lot of street projects that you saw, we incorporated water main replacement with. This photo that you see here is actually a photo from West Endage Avenue where we coordinated water main replacement with that street project. Water quality projects for all iron system, groundwater, and that's something that's inherent to the water quality, the water chemistry. We've got iron in the water. Of our 13 treatment plants I talked about, we're going to be talking about that in some previous, in some future slides, this is the slide where we're going to talk about that. Those 13 treatment plants, we only have two right now with iron removal. So, that means we've got 11 plants that don't have iron removal. We're working now to incorporate iron removal at treatment plants when we build new treatment plants. We're also looking to consolidate plants so that we have less plants or able to better control the precision and quality of the water that comes from those plants. We're also making changes to corrosion control. We're going to an optimized corrosion control program where we're using a pre-mixed chemical instead of mixing, hand mixing that chemical ourselves, so we're purchasing that chemical pre-mixed, and then we're building in automation to the system. So, when those stations pump more, they're also programming in that ideal or optimized rate of corrosion control within that. Again, we're also, we've got some other projects focused on water quality. We're extending water main out in township areas that we have residential wells impacted by PFAS, so connecting those customers to public water supply gets them off that contaminated water supply. Shifting gears, looking at wastewater, we've got about $240 million of improvements in wastewater. A whole lot of topic areas here, projects across many different areas focusing on treatment at the station itself, focusing on reliability of the system, improvements to collector sewers as well as the interceptor sewers, doing work out in the townships. We've got some age replacement work that's happening within the treatment plant itself. We just completed the tertiary disc filter building, that was $26 million investment that, that's an image of that building you see in the slide. That building was brought online to replace about a 45-year-old sand filter process, and this provides cleaner effluent to the river and really helps the overall treatment efficiency at the plant. One of the things, one of the challenges that we have at the treatment plant is that we spend about $15 million a year in sludge disposal. So, the clean water comes in, or the water comes in, we separate it out and put clean water into the river. We have a biosalad process leftover, a residual, that is a cake, that cake is disposed of in the landfill, and we're currently spending about $15 million a year to do that. We've been working with a team of stakeholders to identify some sustainable biosalads alternative. We've had a project identified last year, we submitted for state funding for that last year, and we started design. Ultimately, we were not successful in that funding application. We also had some other factors that were affecting costs and affecting our ability to permit that project. We've switched gears, we've pivoted a little bit on our design recommendation for that. In that project plan, we had an alternative A2, which was a dryer-only facility, so it's just a slightly revised version of what was presented previously. So, we'll be coming back to the City Commission in April with a recommendation for a resolution to support a funding request for '27, which would be implemented in October of '26 if that's approved. Another focus area that we've got at the KWRP is reduction of odors in and around our community. We've realized an 89% reduction in hydrogen sulfide odor around the KWRP, and that's taken a lot of hard work, and there's some work that we're going to continue to focus on. We've got over $2.5 million of work dedicated in the FY '26 budget specifically on air quality and odor reduction. Let's shift gears and get into the rate recommendations now. First, we're going to talk about water. Water, we equalized water rates across the two major customer classifications, which is either in-city or out-city. So, in-water customers are just water customers, there's no designation between in-city and out-city. There is still a designation of commodity rates based on that customer type. So, you have residential customers, institutional customers, commercial customers, multifamily customers, seasonal and irrigation customers. The rates are determined by a cost-of-service analysis, which looks at each one of those customer classifications and determines what the revenue requirements are for that customer classification and what the costs are for that customer classification in terms of what are we spending in that customer classification. Through a detailed analysis, the recommendations came forward that we needed a 5% overall water rate increase, and then each one of those classifications varies. Residential's 6.5%, multifamily's 3%, and then our commercial and institutional is about 5%. This all translates to about a $2.38 increase for a typical residential customer, and that's the same whether you're in-city or out-city. In wastewater rate, we're working towards equalizing those in-city and out-city rates for all the same reasons we did that in drinking water. We're still on a glide path for that, so we're still working towards that equalized-rate concept. There are many more customer classifications within, it's just in-city and out-city. So, in-city and out-city, from a residential perspective, those rates would be equalized in wastewater, and we're working towards that. We do have many industrial customers in wastewater. Those industrial customers pay more for their load, their respective loading, so there's kind of that domestic baseline for, so all customers pay based on a domestic rate. Industrial customers would pay more than that domestic rate. Again, that increase in wastewater is about 9%, but that boils out to different rate percentages by those different customer classes. For a typical city customer, you'd be looking at about $2.69 per month increase, and a township customer is about $2.02. So, bringing those both together, that impact from water, the impact from wastewater together, that's about $5 a month for a city customer, and about $4.40 a month for a township customer. Those industrial customers or municipal customers, those are more detailed, and those are in your rate packets, you've got some information there. In the wastewater ordinance, there's wastewater rate reports, some of the bigger cities or bigger customers are named out in terms of what their, what their cost is. We've got this chart in front of you that provides an overall indication of where Kalamazoo is in comparing, in comparison to other communities. You see that across the board, average utility rate for water and wastewater is about $75 a month. Kalamazoo is below that, there's many peer communities that are below that. It's a pretty flat line for communities that are below that line. We move a little bit on that. One thing I will caution Commissioners, as you look at this, is that we have a January 1st fiscal year, many of these communities have a July fiscal year, so in July, this will change again. And we saw that, we've looked at this in years past, and we saw that a lot of times we're kind of neck and neck with Muskegon and Wyoming. We have rate recommendations that would go into effect in January, and then July, the chart, the chart switches again in Wyoming and Muskegon, catch back up again. So, it's, rates would remain below that, that average. Summarizing again, system rate increases for the water system, about 5%, wastewater about 9%. In your rate recommendations, we actually are showing you what these recommendations are, would be over the next five years. So, with this capital program that we've got, over the next five years, we have systematic rate recommendations that are programmatic. So, in water, we're looking at a 5% to 7% structural increase every year. Wastewater is a 9% recommendation this year, that drops to 7% next year. It stays around 7% for the upcoming years, and then in 2031, when we complete that biosalads project, we actually recommend a rate holiday. So, that would save enough dollars by doing that project that we wouldn't need a rate increase in 2031. Did want to highlight all the resources that we're bringing into the city for water and wastewater, over $43 million, about $43.5 million of federal or state grants that have, that have been awarded to us, so those are dollars that are not in rates. Those are dollars that help go directly to projects that have saved our citizens dollars. Also want to highlight some community engagement, we're represented by Utility Policy Committee that helps to develop these rate recommendations. That Utility Policy Committee spent a lot of time dealing with those cost-of-service analysis and recommendations as we looked at the overall rate recommendation from revenue requirement, that 5% for water, and then how that breaks out to those different classes. I can share with you, and it's in your packets, that that first cut at that recommendation was for, I believe, a 9% increase for residential for water. That Utility Policy Committee wanted to take a different approach in that, wanted to take a gentler approach, a smoother approach, which ended up, resulted in a 6.5% rate increase recommendation for that residential customer, and only a 3% recommendation for multifamily. At this time, I'm going to introduce Mr. Tom Wheat from the Utility Policy Committee to provide some perspective on the work the UPC has done. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Tom Wheat on the Utility Policy Committee. And we have another Utility Policy Committee member back here, John Crum, from the Go-Lake Sewer and Water Authority. So, the Utility Policy Committee is set up by the water contract between the city and the customer communities. And amongst other things that we advise in policy is we look at the rates with the, with the city, with the rate consultants. And this year, it took a couple extra steps just because of what, what James just mentioned in terms of the 9% versus, we're taking more of a smoothing approach to it. But in the end, we, the route we chose, or the route that we have, the UPC is coming to you and recommending that you, that you adopt these rates are what James is, is presenting to you today. So, at the Utility Policy Committee, it was a unanimous vote to support the rates that James is recommending. So, that's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer, but...
Questions, Commissioners?
I'll let James continue.
Yeah, Commissioner Sladey.
Is this just questions for Mr. Wheat? Okay.
No questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm just going to kind of go through some next steps. We are, tonight, on your regular agenda, there is a first reading of the water rate ordinance. Wastewater, you'll see on your December 15th packet, because that's a resolution, doesn't require the two-step process, so action would then be requested on the December 15th meeting. And then, what we're proposing is, would be that these rates would go in effect January 1st and would coincide with the budget for 2026. Happy to answer any questions at this point. Also want to highlight that we're going to have Community, Community Action Agency of South Central Michigan to talk about water affordability and our programs there directly after me, and then we'll both be available for questions, so take any questions, happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Baker. Commissioner Sladey.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation. I really love the gradual approach that you are taking with increasing the rates, you know, year to year, and taking into consideration all of our different types of customers, from commercial, industrial to residential. Wanted to just confirm, right, so we were speaking about the rates and what they would look like month to month, but as we know, we bill our customers on a quarterly basis. So, I want to make sure that people at home understand that they won't necessarily see that $5 increase on their quarterly bill, they'll see a $15 increase. They'll see a $15 increase because they're billed quarterly, which is still very low. And I love to see that we still remain under the state average. So that's amazing compared to all the other communities in Michigan. I wanted to also thank you for pointing out what this funds. So one of the top priorities that I heard from the community during the campaign and just over the years is water quality. And this is what helps us make the million-dollar investments that are required to be able to do the iron removal that everyone is asking for. And so ultimately, we are trying to meet the expectations of what people have for our services when it comes to water quality. And the only way to do that is to be funded by rates, and we need to be able to cover those costs. So again, I think for $15 more a quarter, we're getting a huge investment that's going to benefit everyone. So I'm excited to hear that. And I wanted to give a shout-out to the work that you guys have been doing with the lead service line replacements. I mean, what I've heard, so correct me if I'm wrong, is if we continue at this rate, we will actually be, we will actually complete 10 years ahead of schedule, right? So ideally, we would be completing close to 100% by 2027 at this rate, and you said that the goal was to complete all of this by 2037. So that's pretty amazing that we're making this type of investment, something, once again, that people are worried about, you know, lead service lines, especially since Flint. And I love to see Kalamazoo took the lead on this and continue to support this work, and happy that we are able to continue to do this work at a price that isn't something that's devastating for many of our households. And I'm sure that, you know, we have something coming up on the agenda later tonight in regards to the water leaky policy. Is there something that you could just speak to that in terms of how that's related to the rate increase, and if that is an impact to households, how that can play a role in supporting them with assistance?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Slade. Those are all very great comments, right on point with everything we're attempting to do here in the water utility. On your, excuse me, on your consent agenda, you've got an item for a water leak adjustment policy. That's something that we want to get commission approval on so that we can make sure we're not going to burden customers in any way that might have experienced a leak. Could be from a leaky toilet, could be from a burst pipe, could be any number of things or factors that could create a bill that you didn't anticipate that shows up in the mail. So that policy's got some very specific items. It is triggered if your consumption is 50% greater than your previous consumption. So if you had, for example, a $200 water bill, the policy would kick on once you exceeded like a $300 water bill that was due to leaks. It then helps provide identification of that leak. There's a process, there's a form, an application, and the customer would fill out, and then that leak is fixed, there's proof that the leak is fixed, and then you don't pay that higher bill, you pay your average bill, what you used to have. So let's say a $200 bill was your typical bill, you get a $20,000 bill, it's not our intent to charge you the $20,000, you would just pay the $200 once that bill is fixed. So that's a big step that we're taking to ensure that we're not going to burden anybody with undue or unnecessary costs. We also have some internal policies on meter readings and estimates, and we're cleaning those processes up to make sure that customers are paying an accurate bill. Some of those policies don't require commission approval. The leak adjustment policy did require commission approval based on how the ordinance is written. So we're excited and hopeful that that would obtain approval, because there's a whole lot of customers that would benefit from not having to be burdened with something like that.
Thank you, Director Baker. Other questions? The other side, Commissioner Slade?
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. And in addition to all of that, we also have an assistance program that is promoted on everyone's quarterly water bills, and I'm sure someone can call 311 if they are facing hardship, can get additional financial support in being able to cover their water bill, whether they're renters or owners of the home, correct?
Correct. And we're going to talk, we're going to go into detail with that here shortly. Yep.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duncan?
Yeah. So you mentioned about the fix, identifying the leak and the leak being fixed. Who takes care of that fix? Is that the city? And if so, who pays for it after the fix is taken care of?
Sure. So the responsibility to identify the leak and fix the leak would be on the account holder. So that could be the property owner, that could be whoever's name is in the account. We can help identify that, so, you know, notify us as soon as possible. That's the first step. And then if you need help identifying where the leak is, we can come out and shut off the water, turn on the water, we can help read the beater, we can help you with the troubleshooting steps of it if you're unable to find it yourself. The repair has to be done by the property owner. We can't make repairs to private property, but we can help identify where that leak is.
And the identification of that leak, does that cost the property owner or the resident in that property any money?
No. No services that public services provide, and this goes, this is across the board, will we ever charge you outside of your water bill for an existing customer?
Okay. And one question, rewinding. So you spoke about the financial impact of switching to the incinerator, possibly switching to the incinerator. Have we looked at the environmental impact of incinerating versus, you know, the process that we're doing now?
Yes, yes. That is a lot of great conversation that involved a very deep dive into all these technologies. So to kind of walk through that, three years ago, we issued an RFP to get all the information of different processes, what they might look like, what their impacts may be. I believe we were over 30 different processes that we evaluated. We met with a stakeholder group that had representatives from many communities, including Kalamazoo, many different engineers, not just our own engineers, but other community engineers. Some of the industries that we serve participated in that as well. And then we narrowed that field down to three technologies. Our evaluation matrix included odors, it included environmental footprint, included sustainability, it included many factors besides just costs alone. So we were really looking through a very wide lens as we selected alternatives. The alternative that we selected, and we moved forward with design, and we applied for funding last year, was a ERS. So it's an energy recovery system. It's a dryer that's kind of plugged directly into a thermal oxidizing unit. It gets a name of an incinerator based on a regulatory perspective, but it combusts at a different temperature, and it utilizes its heat through its process back to the dryer. The fact that it was, from a regulatory standpoint, an incinerator, meant different things, and it was going to create some challenges from a permitting perspective. There was also a cost factor in that there was only one manufacturer that makes that process, and we've seen another community, Warren, Michigan, who is implementing that right now, they've experienced a 30% cost increase of that project. Now, this was a $200 million project. If we increase that cost by 30%, that's a tremendous increase in cost. That's going to put us, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $260 million, which is going to start to not make sense anymore from a cost savings perspective, because, you know, costs and rates are important. We need to manage and control rates. So we reconvened with stakeholders again, and we've since looked at, looking at just performing the dryer perspective of that process. So using a dryer, drying the material, achieving 75% dryness, pelletizing that material, storing a dried material, hauling out a dried material, and then utilizing the cost savings from that, and then we're not getting into the environmental aspects of the incinerator piece of it. Additionally, there's more vendors that can bid on that, and we have a competitive bid situation, so we can help to keep those costs down. We'll have slides available, we just got slides available from that presentation that we did at the stakeholder event, so we'll probably put those slides in the communication aspect of the agenda item that's going to be on the 15th.
Thank you. You have been very thorough.
Thanks again. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Hess.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Director Baker, a stellar presentation. Appreciate you being here and all of the work that you're doing on behalf of all of the people of Kalamazoo and who use our water system. 70 years, that's amazing. And thank you also, not only for working on water, but for working on air quality. And so our water and our air are in good hands. You spoke about lead and lead testing. How can all the people that use the water system know about this, the lead testing that we do? Do you, what do we do to make people aware? I know that we send out newsletters, I know that we have View from the Curb, I know we have a lot of things. How can we make sure that every customer knows about this lead testing for, and, you know, you talked about three parts per billion here. Is there any natural level of lead in water?
So let me answer the lead question first. So first of all, there's no safe level of lead in water, period. There is no natural level of lead. Our bodies don't want lead in our bodies. We should have, we should really seek, our goal is zero. Zero might not be attainable. It might be one of those things that even after we remove all the lead surfaces, there's still those faucets I talked about manufactured before 2014. Many homes still may have lead interior piping. There is potentially other sources within private plumbing that could leach lead into drinking water. So awareness is very important, and there is no safe level of lead. I'll talk now about some of that communication piece to some of those customers. Again, our most critical customers are customers that currently have a lead service line. We want to make sure we're communicating to those customers directly. Those customers receive a notice via mail every six months that they have a lead service. So that's an important aspect of it. So if you have a lead service, you're going to get a letter in the mail that says that this address has a lead service line. That's where we start. We also have a website. If you're curious and you know your house number, your address, you can go to our website, you can look up what is this service material at my address, click on a link, it takes you into a GIS page, and then you type in your address, and it will pull up and it'll show you what your service line is. It will have kind of two lines, it'll say copper, copper, that means the street service is copper, the yard service is copper. That's a very useful tool for folks that maybe you're interested in buying a house in Kalamazoo, or maybe you've got a loved one and you want to understand what their service line is, use that online lookup tool. Also, on our webpage for lead, you can request free filter or testing, you can also call 311, or if you live outside of the city limits, you can call 337-8000, and that will connect you with our folks in 311 as well, and you can request lead sampling or a filter. We've given out over 10,000 filters already since we've implemented this program, and we'll provide a filter to anybody, not just somebody that's on a lead service line. Again, because we don't know, is there a faucet, is there interior plumbing? Those risks still may be there. So we'll offer a filter to anybody, we'll offer testing to anybody as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. So, I mean, my first year here, 2019, we've, and we've heard this presentation every year, frankly, I'm starting to look forward to hearing from you and about what we're doing and how we're moving forward on our water service. And I've become much more aware of my usage and why, and also, you know, what we're putting in our waste stream. And I would hope that we're all inspired by this presentation about keeping our resources clean and healthy for everyone. Last question, you know, Commissioner Slade, you brought up the monthly billing, that you talked about quarterly billing, and yes, $15 for a quarter might be a whole lot more if you're not budgeting it out monthly. And we spoke before, a few years ago, I think, about metered monthly readings, but we can't do that until everybody is on the smart meter system. Can you tell us a little bit about that and how soon we can expect the ability for us to be able to do monthly readings?
Sure. So we've got roughly 46,000 accounts in our system, so there's a whole lot of meters out there. We have begun a smart meter program through attrition. We also have programmed smart meter replacements with projects, so those lead service line projects we talked about, we've already got somebody in the basement, so we're coordinating with those contractors to replace the meter as well. We've also been working out with some partner agencies. We've partnered with Go-Lake Sewer and Water Authority to do contractual smart meter replacements for us in Richland Township. So we're looking to optimize resources and look to see if we're going to be in a home or can, scheduled to be in a home, can we, you know, do more work than just what's there in front of us. We're, from a goal standpoint, looking to replace about 5% smart meters every single year. We've issued an annual report in water that will come out in February, where we'll detail the amount of replacements that we completed in this last year. I can tell you that City Crews alone replaced over 300 smart meters just last month, just by themselves. So we're taking this work very seriously. We're kind of grabbing the reins on smart meters and really trying to implement a major program. We haven't committed to a big, solid program in the CIP yet, but we're continuing to look at that. We'd probably need about two consecutive years of about $8 million to just complete the entire system en masse. We're still kind of stepping towards that using those optimization techniques that I talked about. We really want to get the system overall through a critical mass on smart meters to where we could start to implement. We've got, I'm probably going to get this number wrong, somewhere between 22 and 28 zones where we read meters and send bills every single day. We've got so many different customers, we've got 11 communities in drinking water, 22 communities in wastewater, we've got industries and all those different commodity classes I talked about. So it's not just residential customers. So we've got all those customer groups, and we're working through our processes to try to get to a point where we can shift over, oops, where we can shift over to get to, that's, to where we can get to monthly billing. And, you know, we're looking at that, we're continuing to evaluate. Conservatively speaking, I'd say we're probably three to five years away from being able to bring something forward that would be substantial. Maybe not the whole system, but maybe half of it or a quarter of it, or something large that would move us in that direction. But that is a goal that we're working towards.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And finally, you know, you spoke about water main breaks, and I want you to take back to your staff and the folks who are on the ground, literally boots on the ground and in the streets, who are out in zero-degree weather fixing those water main breaks. I want you to take our gratitude and the gratitude of a community to them, because, you know, some of us don't even want to step outside in that weather, and they're out working in it on behalf of all the people of Kalamazoo. So thank you so much to you and to your staff and to the folks who do that work on our behalf.
Thank you, Conley. We definitely take that back and let staff know the appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments to you? Christian Prado?
Thanks for your presentation, Director Baker. You've mentioned that we're about 61% of the lead service line replacement goal with 75% next year with successful 1,200 lines replaced in Edism. Last year, we had the previous administration, a representative here, to celebrate our 5,000th service line. I remember you talking to us about how, just to put it in perspective of how significant that is, that nationwide, there were 180,000 lines that had been replaced, and just to think that 5,000 of those were, you know, city of Kalamazoo. And that puts into perspective, I mean, that's talking like Chicago, New York, LA... And that puts into perspective, I mean, that's talking like Chicago, New York, LA, I mean, these massive communities that we were definitely, I guess, punching above our weight in terms of the work being done. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about like how ambitious this is compared to other communities and, yeah.
Certainly, yeah, Commissioner, you're right on point when Tom Perez was here from, from the Biden administration last year, I mean, it was, it made a major point of celebration of how successful Kalamazoo is in this program and nationwide, you know, we're, we're right there amongst many other communities. And even in the state of Michigan, we're, you know, continuing to really chip away at something very big here. I think it's important to note that, you know, we started this work back in 2017 when the city commission was dedicated to do the work, and it wasn't going to get them all done in that year, but it was staying consistent and true to that goal. It was completing, you know, small, meaningful steps that we could do every year, and not to put it lightly, that, at that time was $5 million of investment that in the year previous, and we've got it, you can go to the website and look, and look at the number of replacements we had in 2015, it was six. And to go from six to 500 is a big step, but it's something that we needed to do, 500 every year for 20 years. Small, meaningful goals that, small achievable goals and in time create meaningful results is something that the commission embraced, supported, continued to support the rate increases to fund it. We've got some help from FFE, we've got some help from the state, from EGO, we've got some help from, from state ARP dollars and from BIL dollars. So we're just pulling all these resources together and we're just going as hard as we can every single year with that goal of getting all the lead out in Kalamazoo. And we crossed the halfway point last year, we put another 1,200 in the ground, we've got 1,200 next year. We're looking at the numbers, we're looking at our progress rate, and we're saying 75% completion is achievable next year. You might have to let me give this presentation in January or February just to make sure that we get through the results. We're going to continue working on it, we work on it every day, but it would be tremendously successful for Kalamazoo to be able to raise our hand here in the next few years and say, hey, Michigan, we're done, and we did so without going into lead action level exceedance.
As Commissioner Slavy said, I think most people would, would kind of laud the success of like reaching a goal of like 2037, but to be able to say that we've done it, you know, potentially 10 years ahead of schedule is really impressive, and you and your team should be really proud of how seriously you've taken this and how aggressively you've tackled it. You had mentioned that right now, we're in the 90th percentile or three parts per billion, and the regulatory cap is like 12 parts per billion. Can you remind me, I feel like maybe like four or five years ago, we were more in the like 10 parts per billion? So I mean, to put that in perspective, when you have 61% of the lines completed, is that where we're seeing that direct decrease, you know, of seven parts per billion on average for the whole utility decrease in lead?
Yeah, there's a few factors going in. There is some noise in the data in that it's not the same homes every single time. So as we move through these replacements, once we replace your lead service and you're in copper, you can't be in the lead program anymore. So there is this kind of attrition program that's, that's happening. That's a good thing, because we're, our goal is to lead with public health and have public health as our North Star as we continue through this program. We're also doing things like optimized corrosion control, which as we work through that, that also helps our numbers. We're also doing things like the consolidated treatment, building new treatment plants at Station 5 and Station 14, that's helping our numbers. And doing the lead replacement is a big help to the numbers. So it's, it's a bunch of things altogether, also with some noise in the data, in that three is a really great number, that's below five, that's probably within the range of best achievable results, but we're going to get a new set of homes in the next six months because we're finishing through Edison. Next year, we finish Edison all the way and we have to move to some other areas, we won't have any homes in Edison. So these, these numbers may change. I don't anticipate that we're going to go back up into double digits, but it would be not atypical to see us go up to like a six or a seven as the data pool shifts around a little bit.
So there are many variable factors to that number?
Correct.
Good to know. So another question I have for you as well, is you talked about the consolidation of water treatment plants 14 and 5, and the kind of strategic goal, I guess if you will, of consolidating our 13 pump stations that we totally, we have in our network. And I guess one of the questions that I was wondering if you could help me understand a little bit better is, it seems like from a risk mitigation perspective, when you look at like pump sta-, the pump stations near Millwood or the airport that we had to take offline, that in some ways like having a more diverse pump station pool could reduce risk, because if one becomes contaminated with PFOS or if something catastrophic happens, it would reduce the risk. But it seems like what we're doing is, is consolidating, which means that there's less, which means if something could hypothetically happen, it would impact a greater part of the population. Can you help me understand where our rationale is for that consolidation? Am I making sense what I'm asking?
Yes, yes. This is a very detailed dive. So we do, on our website and utilities plans and reports, we've got station studies, and we've got two studies that kind of provided us our guidance and our direction of kind of where we're headed today. One of those studies was a consolidation study, single source treatment plant on Lake Michigan, where we looked and evaluated building a treatment plant on Lake Michigan somewhere near or around South Haven, and then bringing in via pipeline either I-94 corridor, Red Arrow Highway corridor, enough flooded, treated drinking water to provide drinking water all to Kalamazoo and surrounding municipalities. We then looked at a consolidated station approach by taking our 13 stations that we have right now, combining them, and then providing additional treatment. Now going back to the decentralized approach where, you know, where we were, where we had 13 stations, you add in the Millwood stations, we were at 16. You go back a few more years and before my time, and there was more stations even beyond that. At that time, and this is getting back to one of the founders of the water department as we know it, Mr. Al Sabeau, who Station 24 is named after, who took over the directorship after E.E. Norman in, in early 1950s, looked at exactly what you're talking about, having a decentralized approach, having stations all across the county, and that if there was a problem, thunderstorm, power outage, well contamination, the size of the system provided the reliability of the system. As we've grown, we've, we're now kind of using that full capacity of the system, and as we take stations out, because, you know, 17 and 18, the Millwood stations, we can't use them because they would be over the Michigan MCL for PFOS, we're kind of up against that threshold for capacity. We don't, we've grown some since the 1950s, and we don't have the luxury of just knocking out stations and not running them, we kind of have to run everything that we have to meet our hydraulic capacity. The other challenge that we have is the regulatory landscape has changed considerably, in that these groundwater stations had relatively lax regulations decades ago. Fast forward to where we are today, from a regulatory standpoint, we're almost to the point where we would be at a surface water treatment plant. We have to have optimized corrosion control, that's a requirement. We have to have automated systems, that's a requirement. We're seeing from a level of service perspective that our customers are demanding iron removal, that's required. So if we build iron removal, all the optimization techniques from the, the programming and ability to run the pumps in real time at all these stations, the cost would exceed building that treatment plant at Lake Michigan. So the kind of sweet spot in the middle is consolidating the station. So like at 5 and 14, we're not building two iron treatment plants and two PFOS treatment plants, we're building one. We're also looking at that at Central, so those property purchases that we've been bringing forward lately are part of a plan to build a bigger footprint at Central in around 2030, 2031 timeframe. That would enable us to increase our hydraulic production at that location, and then take off Station 4, Station 3, Station 7, and possibly some other stations. We're also looking at a similar conversation in the high pressure district to consolidate a lot of stations at some other location and have increased hydraulic capacity. So the intent would be reduce the number of stations, consolidate them, provide higher degrees of treatment at those stations, that would also redraw those well field protection or wellhead protection boundaries, and we'd seek to provide a little bit greater oversight and control in those wellhead protection boundaries. So where we are right now, we've got the system scattered out throughout the county, and those, those overlay districts are kind of all kind of touching each other, we consolidate those into a tighter footprint. It's not perfect, I think there's certainly risk in everything, even if we looked at the, the Lake Michigan plant concept, which its greatest challenge was its cost, there's still risk there. Lake Michigan is a tremendous water body, but what if, and we don't know when, something happened? That would, that would be problematic. There's also, what if something happened at one of our consolidated plants? You know, I, I think that risk is still there, it's going to be inherent and important for us to continue with advanced stages of treatment filtration and to provide the best technology available. But those, those risks are part of that consolidated design as well.
And most communities are like a sole source extraction, so they come from one source? Most communities?
Most, yeah. So to give some comparison, Detroit has millions and millions of customers, they're the biggest utility in the state of Michigan, they have three treatment plants. They're surface water treatment plants based out of Lake Huron, different from our groundwater perspective. From a groundwater perspective, the only other comparable community is Lansing, and they've got about the same setup as, as we do in terms of well. Groundwater communities, if you take away Kalamazoo and Lansing, they're all very small communities in comparison. And those smaller communities have one or two, maybe three sources. If you remember back with the parchment crisis, parchment had one source, and that one source became contaminated.
So if I understand you, if you could summarize basically, like, yeah, consolidation, there are risks presented with it, but with the higher standard of treatment, you could argue that you're taking better care of the higher risk?
Correct. We, we would, we would suggest that the regulatory standards in place and our commitment to uphold those standards would mitigate the risk, but there still would be risk.
Sure. In the fiscal year '26 budget, there's proposed increases in staffing and public services. Can you speak a little bit about those added positions and what they're aiming to provide?
Sure. There's, there's a few very minor additions in, in water wastewater, I think there's one FTE in wastewater collection supervisor, that's a supervisor of the crews that clean the pipes. We call the pipe network in wastewater collections, because it collects the flow and conveys it to the treatment plant. We also have in drinking water, a number of positions, believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of four or five positions in, in distribution and in billing staffing. There's, separate from utilities, we have a request for four positions that are in streets, those are concrete and asphalt positions, but those positions would be used for storm cleaning. Those storm positions connected with the request to purchase a vector would be dedicated to cleaning out storms through catch basins, there's over 13,000 of those in the city, and we would be pulling the lids, cleaning out all the sediment from that catch basin or structure, doing a work order, documenting the material that we remove from it, and then issuing any kind of work orders for repairs to that. So that's an overview of what those positions are. Broadly speaking, water and wastewater isn't, we're not moving the needle a lot in, in positions. Both of those departments have about 100 FTE each in them right now.
And that vector purchase is on the consent agenda, I think, G14 tonight, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
Great. One other question I had for you as well, I've heard from a number of people in just my day job about the impact of quarterly payments basically for, for utility and how it would be much more helpful if it was on a monthly basis? And can you just speak to maybe what barriers exist to, that prevent us from moving to that quarterly base, or to that monthly basis?
Sure. I think, you know, just, there's some, some real challenges in how we pull the data in. So we talked about smart meter, I talked about that smart meter attrition program and some of those smart meter optimization programs where we're working with our lead work or partnering with another agency to get more smart meters in homes. So with the smart meters, we can get the data in real time, we can load those into billing software platforms and move it out. If it's not a smart meter, it's a read meter, and we've got to send staff out to that meter. And that's where the real challenge is. So to get the entire system in a monthly bill process where we are right now with our current meter technology would be too demanding from a resources standpoint in terms of staff that we currently have in place. And so our, our best approach would be to manage that over time with the automation, AMI program that would be available to us when we hit kind of critical mass on smart meter implementation.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Other questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Slavy.
So I'm thinking about some of our residents when, just when they hear discussion around rate increases or bond or millage or things like that, you know, they, their, their pushback can be, well, it sounds like we're not managing our budget correctly, or we've neglected things and let things go. And so what I just wanted to maybe emphasize here in this moment is that we're restricted from using general fund to support this work, correct? Like we have to rely on our fortune with getting grant funding externally and FFE, but we are supposed to be self-sufficient and, and rely on these rates to fund all of this, correct?
That's correct. Water wastewater are enterprise funds in that they're supported completely by rates for services provided, so that commodity that we provide, water, there's a, there's a rate for that and customers pay for that. That's important, really important for Kalamazoo in that at those funds, and we have bonded in those funds to pay for these projects, we've got bond covenants that require us to charge those rates to support those projects. If we don't bring in sufficient rates to, to support the projects and the programs that we have in place, the only backstop that we would have from a fiduciary standpoint is general fund. Now, we talked about how water serves 11 communities, wastewater serves 22 communities, that's not fair to the Kalamazoo taxpayer to have to provide the backstop for 22 other communities. Kalamazoo ratepayers, from a wastewater perspective, only fund 25% of the system. The other 75% is either out city, industries, other communities, folks that are not Kalamazoo taxpayers. So it's, from a utility perspective, we're much smaller than like an electric utility, but it's very similar. There's electric utilities across the state of Michigan, they serve many, many customer communities. It would not be fair to the City of Jackson to say, hey, that electric utility is located in City Jackson, make City of Jackson taxpayers pay for that. It's just not fair for that customer base, and it would not be fair for City Kalamazoo taxpayers.
In addition to that, when we think about the budget and how we manage it and the work that we decide to prioritize, so if you could speak to like the life cycle of a pipe, you mentioned earlier in the presentation that we're thinking, we're, we're dealing with World War II pipes mostly, some are older than that, but the, the quality of the material that was placed during and after the war was less quality than even the older stuff that was put in place. And so this is why we're seeing breaks at this point from, you know, due to that quality of material that was put in place at that time, and just, you know, it's at its end of its of its life, right? And, and things, just like anything, right, come to a point where it has to be replaced. So this isn't a result of us not being able to prioritize these projects over time or our neglect of maintenance. This is ultimately just part of running a city, and we're restricted to using rates, and due to the increase in construction materials and, and staffing, labor, all of that, you know, we ultimately have to increase the rates in order to make this investment. Could, but could you just talk about that life cycle? How long do we expect these pipes to last? What factors are in place in terms of, you know, speeding up that life cycle or not? And what do we do to help deter, you know, breaks and all of that, and corrosion?
Sure, sure. Happy to talk about that. So pipes, generally speaking, we anticipate those materials to last between fifty and a hundred years. We see that the pipes installed prior to World War Two, so like nineteen thirty-nine, an older pipe is thicker, it's a different metallurgy, it's still cast iron, it still has some brittle tendencies to it, but it's holding up in our system much better than the pipe that was installed from around World War Two era to like post-war era, until then we switched to ductile iron, which started in nineteen sixty-four. So we're focusing on, on that pipe material. If we go back to, say, nineteen fifty-five and, and older, that's seventy years. That, that pipe has served its purpose well, probably doesn't owe us anything, and has performed very well. So this work that we're doing now is, is really phased, it's planned, it's part of our work is to run a good, reliable utility and to keep things going into the future so that we can mitigate those water main breaks. Also want to highlight, you know, we talked about Station Five, Station Fourteen, and that work, and we're building that new consolidated station. Station Five was built nineteen fourteen. That station is a hundred and eleven years old, and it continues to operate, is operating right now, and it has to operate until we complete the new consolidated station, which is still going to be another three years yet. It's under construction, but it's going to take some time to get online. If anything doesn't speak to the investment and the stewardship that City Kalamazoo has provided over the years, I will take you out to Station Five and show you how well that has held up, because crews, staff, engineers, city commissions have continued to support the water utility. This commission and many commissions continue to make water a priority, and it shows in asset age, asset reliability in the system, and we want to continue those investments to continue to have a reliable system.
All right, colleagues. Well, wow, lots of great questions. And I will suggest, if you are indeed really into this topic, which is evident that you are, one of your options on the commission liaison list, which I think you may have received today, is the Utility Policy Committee, which I've been sitting on since it was formed, and you get to have these kinds of deep dives on a monthly basis. But I feel still further informed by going through this tonight. So thank you, Director Baker, and I know we have an affordability of presentation right now. Yes, I'll leave the remote up here, Laura.
All right. Do we have the presentation? I know it was late before the holidays, so I was hoping you guys received that. There we are. Hi, my name's Laura Jones. I am the Assistant Director of Emergency and Supportive Services for Community Action South Central Michigan. Our community action covers actually five counties. Kalamazoo is our largest, so under kind of our umbrella of the community action world, we have Berry, Branch, Calhoun, Kalamazoo, and St. Joe counties. A couple of programs I'm going to talk about tonight related to water, do, they are available in all of our counties, but one thing that they both require is to be connected to either metered water or sewer or both accounts. So some of our more rural counties do not see as much assistance with this program because we're looking at the affordability for our water bill customers. Community Action's mission is, we're dedicated to helping people achieve and maintain independence that happens through various programs. Water bill assistance, this program is to assist eligible residents who have a financial burden, so usually we're thinking in that is low income or limited income, have an accumulated balance on their water or wastewater utility bill if they've had their water service shut off or at, or are at risk of having their water shut off. Clients do not have to be in shut-off status to come see us, as long as they are past due, then there is a need and there is an emergency. We'd like to catch those clients before they are at the point where they're actually going to lose water service. That cuts down on past due fees, reconnect fees, things like that. Services for our water bill assistance is capped at three thousand per fiscal year. However, with this program, there are exceptions. So if we have somebody who's had a major leak, and they have that giant bill that they just cannot afford to get caught up on, we can actually go to the Bureau, our state Bureau, and ask them for an exception. They have never turned us down, we've always gone to them with, the need is there, and they have accommodated that need. So I've seen bills as high as seven thousand dollars get taken care of through this program, which is just amazing. For the program, all that is required is that they are past due, they can provide a copy of the water bill, they can provide thirty days of household income, valid IDs for anyone over the age of eighteen, and proof of social security numbers for everyone in the home. That can be provided through social security cards, or we've made accommodations for people who cannot acquire those documents and even ask for exceptions to having those documents at all. So we've had people who haven't been able to obtain an ID for various reasons, maybe they can't get their documents from out of state, we're able to ask for exceptions and find other ways to do IDing. Eligibility requirements. So for water bill assistance in the plumbing program I'm going to talk about, the household income limit is below two hundred percent FPL, or categorically eligible. So I'll go into categorically eligible here in just a moment. The water bill must be passed due, water bill must be in the applicant's name. So we do have quite a few renters who the landlords do not want to transfer services into the, the tenant's name because then they don't know where the water bill status is, and that can negatively affect them in the future. We just ask that they provide a lease showing that they're required to pay that bill. Applicants must live in the home that's receiving the assistance or moving into that home. So if they have a past due bill from a previous address, and they're going to turn on services at a new address, if they need that past due bill, we can go ahead and take care of that to get them current and, and good status moving forward. I pulled some numbers from the start of this specific program until to now, so since ten one twenty twenty-three to nine thirty, that was the end of our fiscal year, we have provided over the five counties, one thousand four hundred and twenty-one payments, five hundred and eighty-two of that was within Kalamazoo County, which totaled two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, just over that, in assistance payments through this one, one funding source. The average bill received is four oh eight, which is down a little bit this year. We've gotten a lot of those people who had large bills from the, the stay of shut-offs caught up. Here's a flyer that we do use that's available on our website, or I can get copies if anybody would like them. Plumbing assistance. So our plumbing assistance program, again, there has to be a metered account. The only thing is that they do not have to own the home. So if we have a tenant in the home, and the landlord is willing to participate and, and fill out the paperwork along with them, it goes off of the tenant's income levels, not the landlord's. So there could be updates made to homes where there's renters, because we're hoping that that cost savings is actually being passed on to our tenants. Need repairs or improvements in their home is a requirement, provide water affordability by addressing leaks to keep the water bills affordable, provide access to water throughout the home, and those services are capped at nine thousand dollars. Again, cap exceptions are available, and we have obtained those through the state. Required documents are very similar to our water bill assistance, with the exception of they do have to provide a deed or title to the home, or have the landlord fill out that landlord packet, giving us permission to do updates to their home. Eligibility requirements are also very similar to the water affordability program, with the exception that they do need to score one priority point. Most of our calls do. One of the major things we see is there's an active leak anywhere in the home. That can be a running toilet, a drippy faucet, that they just need to score one of those points. But we are asking them, do they have access to water throughout the home, whether it be hot water or a toilet, shower, able to wash their dishes in their kitchen sink? We do have clients who are extremely low income that may be washing them in the bathtub. We, you know, we want to make sure we're providing water affordability and accessibility throughout the entire home. Currently enrolled, this is started in four one twenty twenty-four, the numbers for this are a little bit harder because we may have done updates to homes that we have not been invoiced for, so it's not actually a payment in our system. But three hundred and six across all five counties so far, sixty-six of those were in Kalamazoo County. Sixty-six are enrolled right now, so that means progress in jobs is happening, twenty-five are completely completed with two hundred thousand dollars in assistance in Kalamazoo County. And here is our flyer for that. Categorically eligibility for either of these programs, if they are on TANF, supplemental security income, they have a recent SCR within the grant period we're in, they are receiving food assistance, or weatherization assistance, they are categorically eligible, which means they do not need to provide us with income eligibility, we can base it off of those other programs. The application process is pretty simple. We offer in-person and virtual options. Some of our clients are not able to travel into our offices for appointments, but can do those things virtually. The intake specialists meet either over the phone or in person to complete the necessary application and forms. They're entered into our empowered database, which determines eligibility. They go, our intake specialists go over our client needs assessment with all of our clients, which is to help identify other needs within the home. So they, they may start out coming to see us for water bill assistance, they may then receive weatherization, plumbing, and various other assistance that they need in the home. Once determined eligible water providers are contacted for past due amounts and commitments to be made to stop any shut offs to certain services. With the plumbing program, we transfer that file over to our housing department because they're the experts there, and they coordinate contractors and quotes and get work scheduled. This is our current poverty income guidelines table that we use until next month, and then we'll get an updated one for twenty twenty-six. For more information, you can always visit our website. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Once again, lots of great detailed information. Commissioner Hess.
Sure. Well, thank you for being here. This is just, this is good news for the people of, of Kalamazoo. You said come and see our, where are your offices? You said come and see us at our offices, where, where can one find you?
Okay. So in Kalamazoo County, we have an office on Westonage, and then we also have an office at the Douglas Association. We've also held walk-in days at various locations throughout the year. We have found that people are more fond of our virtual option because they do have work or other commitments, and traveling in and kind of waiting can be difficult, but we have offered that at times to get as many people through the door as possible.
Thank you. And this information is available on the city's website as well?
Yes, I also want to highlight that in your water bill, the water bill, the past due notice and shut off notice all include access to resources, and also on the past due and shut off notice, on the outside of the envelope, it says help, financial assistance is available, and references this number to call.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Seaby.
So with the cap being nine thousand, if I'm a resident, I'm facing hardship, I call, I say, hey, I need assistance, I need all the requirements, and you assist me, three months later, can I come and call again and say, hey, I need assistance?
So the cap would still stand in that point, say we exhausted all nine thousand of what is typically available. We would reach out to then the state Bureau and ask them for an exception and explain whatever outlining circumstances there may be for the extra need. And again, they haven't told me no yet when I've had to do that, so we always have a valid reason and a good reason to go to them, and they usually are pretty accommodating for those circumstances.
So there's no current limit right now for a single household to keep returning to seek assistance?
No, not typically.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seaby. Other questions? Questions? All right, thank you so much for being here and sitting with us through the entire water presentation. I hope you feel much educated on our system here.
It was very informative.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Our pleasure. So we're all set, Director Baker? Thank you so much. Anything else? Page more?
Nothing else.
All right, thank you. So this, I would just say this, is that to folks at Public Media Network, I think Max and Lem pay attention to these sorts of things, and often post, because this is all recorded, obviously, committee of the whole, these are public meetings and, and can be viewed, but often these meetings are posted, and I think Lem in particular will go through and say, you might want to check in at minute seven and twenty-two seconds, and you'll see a good question about such and such. So I think they do a great, great job, where you don't have to sit through the entire presentation. If there's something in particular you are interested in related to our system that provides clean water and addresses our wastewater issues and affordability, you can literally see that summary section and go right to the point that you're interested in. So I just want to thank Public Media Network for doing that, that's a great public service. And once again, thank you to the team here at the city that does this great work and puts this all together. Now is the opportunity for commissioner comments here for Committee of the Whole. Just a reminder for anyone who's watching, we also have commissioner comment period at the end of our business meeting, which will be at seven, but commissioners, do you want to take advantage of this commissioner comment time for Committee of the Whole? All right, thank you so much. Seeing that no one is interested, then the Committee of the Whole meeting is now adjourned, and we will be meeting again for our business meeting at seven.